All right. Good evening. And welcome to the June 24, 2025 council meeting. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos a la reunión del Consejo Municipal de Watsonville del 24 de junio de 2025. Can I please have roll call?
Clark? Dutra?
Here.
Montesino?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Quiros Carter?
Here.
Salcito?
Here.
And Orozco?
Here.
We have quorums.
Thank you. So before we move on to item 4.8, I do have an announcement. So to use Spanish interpretation devices obtained one from the table by the interpretation booth, turn it on and make sure it is on channel E. To use assisted listening, turn the device to channel A. If you can't hear, check that the device is on. The volume can be adjusted using arrow buttons, and please return it before you leave. Para usar los aparatos de interpretación en español, obtenga uno de la mesa junto a la caseta de interpretación. Préndalo y asegúrese de que esté en el canal E. Para usar la audición asistida, use el canal A. Si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido. El volumen se puede ajustar usando los botones con flechas. Por favor, regreselo antes de irse. Now moving on to item 4.8, motion to excuse absent council members. Do I have a motion from council?
Yeah, a motion to excuse Casey Clark.
Can I have a second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Hi.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Quiros Carter?
Hi.
Salcito?
Hi.
And Orozco?
Hi.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 5.0, the pledgable agents. Can I please have council member Eduardo Montesinas? I mean, Montesino, lead us into it, please.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to items 6.0, information items. Disbursement and missed document reports are available for your reference on the agenda packet. And now moving on to item 7.0, oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting, or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in, in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. So with that, moving on to item 7.8, oral communications from the public. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council?
Steve Trujillo, District 7. Hello, Arti. Cabrillo Community College Board of Trustees. This is my second term. I want to thank Justin Meek and his staff yesterday for doing a lovely presentation in the room next door about rail and trail. I have been arguing with people on Nextdoor.com who seem to think that we don't need a rail. We can afford a trail, we can't need it, we don't need a rail. And some are saying I'm overtaxed. Well, so am I. And I would point out, for those of you who aren't aware of it, that BART, Caltrain, and VTA's light rail were all overpriced and took much longer than expected. The reason is its infrastructure. And when you buy up with eminent domain people's land and have been, are responsible for making sure they can get relocated, it's expensive and it takes time. Well, this is supposed to last a very long time, and I'm hoping that our beautiful electric rail is going to last at least, well, going to well last beyond any of us living here, and it will be around for a long time. I'm very pleased to see that even though the rail is not going to Davenport, the trail is, and it is something that will make this place better to live, and it will help both tourism and agriculture. Now, my other topic is that I would really enjoy going to the Fourth of July Parade and marching in it this year, but because of what's happening in Washington, there's no possible way I can, I can support it. My American flag on my front door is upside down. I wish that one was. It should be. We're in grave peril, grave danger. We're nearly, if we're very coming close to a fascist state, and therefore I will be doing other things on July 4th. I hope the parade goes well, and all of you have a very nice July 4th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. My name is Peter Quill. I am from the planet nowhere, and I'm much better known probably as the greatest outlaw in the galaxy, Starlord. They heard of me. The man who destroyed, defeated Thanos. Nobody else could do it. Not even Tony Stark could do it.
Can we just get with the program?
Okay. This is Gamora. Gamora, say hi to everybody.
I am Gamora, from the Guardians of the Galaxy, protector of the universe.
You're next. And I decided to come back to my home planet Earth to attend this awesome event that you guys host here in this city, City of Watsonville. And it's Nerdville. I love Nerdville. When I heard that the Killer Clowns from Outer Space, the directors were coming back, I said I had to be there. So we traveled across the universe, fought Galactus, then came here, and we're ready for Saturday and Sunday for Nerdville. Do you want to let them know who else is coming?
We have great voice actors like Trina Hishimura, Stephanie Young, Jesse Hooker, and Kyle Herbert. Kyle Herbert is the voice of Gohan from Dragon Ball Z.
And it's taking place at the same place where we usually have it, at Watsonville High School. It'll be from 10 to 5:00 in the afternoon. It's free for PVUSD students. We're the only ones that are beating inflation, and we dropped our prices for the adults, so feel free to swing by. And the day before, we are also having a showing of the Killer Clowns at the Public House on Main Street. Everyone's welcome to go. We'll have a Q&amp;A with the directors afterwards. It should be fun. Tickets are online on Eventbrite. You can also check our Instagram and our website.
We're done.
NerdvilleA31.org. And we'll leave flyers here. Okay, we gotta go back because we gotta, you know, the universe and stuff.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, City Council members, my name is Antonio Rivas. I come before you as a member of the California's senior legislature to really, to take this opportunity to thank your City Council member Dutra and Council member Parker for bringing into your attention and providing funding for Meals and Wheels. Out of the, you know, remember, out of the service community grants. It was a very important decision that you made, because we need to take care of our seniors, along with the other, the boxing program for our youth. That was very important too for our youth. With that awareness, thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for approving such needed funding for our seniors and youth. With that in mind, please, I ask you to continue to be conscious in the future of the needs of our elder population, especially our immigrant elder community in our city of Watsonville. Again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for caring to the needs of our seniors. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing that there's none, we'll bring it back to council for oral communications from them. Do we have any council members with comments? Council member Montesino?
Yeah, just, I do want to mention, you know, we recently got news about our former city manager, Carlos Palacios, retirement on the county. I know he, you know, was here for about 20 years, and now he's been a decade over at the county, at the county level. So I just want to recognize, you know, what tremendous difference he did to our community as a city manager, but also what a difference he made at the county and helped out Watson. And now we got a new center. There's stuff along the way that's, that's coming in the pipeline for better, better county services for our communities. So just want to thank him for, for his service.
Council member Ari Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who is attending today. I also want to invite you to the Eastlake Shopping Center, which has wonderful food. We have our new Silver Spur restaurant and a lot of other fabulous foods and, and some gourmet pizza, too. So come on out over there to the, I guess it's the eastern entrance to the city of Watsonville. We should put up a big, you know, sign and things like that. And I won't, I won't say too much about this, because I'm sure the mayor's going to report on it. Really enjoyed being at the pickleball ribbon cutting. It was so great to see a huge amount of seniors there. And, and the mayor says, and I'm suing it publicly, has committed to taking pickleball lessons with me. And the Mayor Pro Tem is going to join us in July. So we're going to get out there and rock, and I hope you guys do, too. Thank you.
Council member Jimmy Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor Maria Rosco. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to bring up, thank you, Mayor Rivas, for that nice comment. It's, it's, we are in a time that's unprecedented, and we need to make sure that we're there for our seniors and for other people in our community. As we know, Meals on Wheels was, you know, faced some really hardships. And so I know we've been, I've been receiving, you know, positive feedback about what we did for Meals on Wheels, and it was the right decision. Also, I want to say for the boxing as well, I've been, I've received emails. A probation officer called me, letting me know, you know, how it has really helped keep kids off the streets. So I think that we, this is how this, this body works, right? Something comes up, we have a discussion in, in, you know, in public, and we work things out, and then we, we finish up, you know, where we stand on something. And so that evening really showed, you know, how the city works when, when funding and, and doing other things. So I just wanted to say that. And I also wanted to say that, you know, I will be at the Fourth of July Parade. I know that some people may be protesting, but I think it is also a way to, you know, to remind people that we do live in a country where we have the, the right to, you know, say what we feel and, you know, go out and express ourselves. And, and I won't let anyone take that away from me, so you will see me there. Thanks.
Council members, Salcito?
Good evening. I had an opportunity to go to the Callahan Grand Opening. I went late because I brought my toddler. And if anyone has tried to go anywhere on time, they'll know that you can intend to be at a 10:00 AM ribbon cutting and actually arrive closer to 11:30 or 12:00. So my son was absolutely thrilled to be there. It was his first time seeing pickleball. I join in Council member Parker and Mayor Rosco's request for pickleball lessons, and we were absolutely thrilled to be there. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Can I please have my slides pulled up? Yeah, so I've been a little busy. I had the honor of attending the PV Health Trust Brother Awards, where I presented a couple of proclamations on behalf of the City of Watsonville to recognize outstanding individuals and organizations for their leadership, dedication, and contributions to our community. I also stood in solidarity with residents and fellow council members at the New Kings Demonstration at the City Plaza. Watsonville continues to be a shining example of what it means to come together, to protect one another, and defend our democracy. In partnership with tri-county leaders, I joined a press conference in support of our immigrant communities, organizing collaboration with Monterey, Santa Cruz, and San Benito Counties. I'm grateful to Supervisor Luis Alejo for bringing us together to reaffirm our collective commitment to dignity, justice, and opportunity for all. In addition, it was a pleasure to attend the Santa Cruz County Farm Borough's 2025 Farmer of the Year Dinner and present a proclamation to this year's honorees Larry Jacobs and Sandra Billing of Jacobs Farm del Cabo on behalf of the City of Watsonville. And a highlight for sure is that we celebrated the ribbon cutting for our newly renovated basketball and pickleball courts at Callahan Park. These upgrades were made possible thanks to Watsonville voters who supported Measure R. So again, thank you so much. And special thanks to the Friends of Parks and Community Services for the new backboards and to our dedicated park staff whose work, hard work has made this mission into a reality. I also attended the Friends of Watsonville Parks and Community Services Board of Directors meeting. We're getting ready for Nerdville this Sunday and our Strawberry Jam Fun Run 1K5K during the Strawberry Festival weekend. These are all events that you shouldn't miss. They're so much fun. And lastly, I had the pleasure of meeting our summer in the city entrance and inspiring group of young leaders who are learning how a local government works and how they can help shape the future of Watsonville. So with that, we'll move on to item 7C, report out of closed session.
Good evening, Mayor and community. In the closed session on item 3A, the council directed me to join on the city's behalf, a lawsuit in the United States District Court in the Western District of Washington at Seattle, Martin Luther King Jr. County et al versus Scott Turner in his official capacity as Secretary of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, case number 2:25-CV-814. In layperson's terms, that is a lawsuit against the federal government.
Thank you. And now moving on to 7D and 7E. There's a couple of proclamations I will be presenting tonight. All right. So the first proclamation we have is for El Fricolito Restaurant. Do we have members of El Restaurante aquí presentes? Okay. So I know I have previously recognized you through our mayor on the move, but this is a very special year for El Fricolito. They're celebrating their 40th year anniversary this year. So I thought it was only fair to do an official proclamation on behalf of the City of Watsonville. So El Fricolito Restaurant has been a part of downtown Watsonville since 1985, when it was founded by Elena Vega and Juan Carrera. For nearly 40 years, El Fricolito has built its reputation not just on great food and reasonable prices, but on the kind of charm you can't fake, such as the iconic hole in the wall peering into the kitchen that has become a sort of landmark, or the lunchtime horde for Watsonville High School students, and packed shoulder to shoulder, waiting for their favorite burritos. Elena and Juan's children, Yadira and Sergio, have honored their family's roots while continuing to evolve with the times, modernizing where needed, but always staying true to the flavors and values they grew up with. El Fricolito remains proudly local, supporting neighborhood schools, cultural events, and local organizations, regularly donating to fundraisers and community efforts. So on behalf of the City of Watsonville, thank you so much for your contributions and for being part of the Watsonville family for 40 years.
Thank you.
Would you like to share a couple words?
I think you might have said it all there. I mean, I mean, thank you, everybody, you know, anybody here who's here that's comes and supports us. But, you know, we couldn't be happier to be here in Watsonville and just kind of feeding the community. Something we love to do. So just looking forward to hopefully another 40 years.
The best chile verde.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. And the next proclamation we have is for the Farmhouse Restaurant. Do we have any members from that business here tonight? All right. Seeing that they're not here, I'll make sure to deliver this personally. Enjoying their breakfast. I have the best breakfast ever. All right. Moving on to item 7F, Revenue Measure Oversight Committee Sales Tax Report by the Revenue Measure Oversight Committee Chair, Eric Sturm.
Good evening, Council, city staff, members of the public. I'm Eric Sturm, chairperson for the Measure Y Revenue Oversight Committee for the city. And if I don't make it to the four minutes ending, because he said I can only have five, I want you to know Measure Y is working. Don't monkey with it. Don't touch it. We have rails in place, guard dogs in place. We have a city oversight committee, and we have a talented staff watching this money come in, where it goes, how it goes. And most of all, something I learned is a maintenance of effort. We have to keep our general fund money up to a certain point before we can spend this, this tax money that comes in. So we're doing that, and we're just, I like to say the wingtips are level, so we're doing great. We're going to shoot through some slides here. I'd like to thank, before we go anywhere, Erwin Ortiz and Alejandro Pacheco for keeping, keeping our committee in, in order and keeping us on track. They do a great job. I'd also like to thank Rick Dana, PJ McCosey, and Robbie Olson, the other committee members, for their work on the committee as well. We do have three vacancies, always looking for more members. So that's good. For anyone who doesn't know what Measure Y is, we get a half-cent sales tax of items that are purchased within the city. The police department gets just over 50% of that. The fire department gets just under 40% of that, and our parks department gets the remaining 8%. And it adds up to about $5 million a year that's dispersed out. And this is supplemental money on top of the general fund money to run the departments. It's not in place of general funds. So the departments are using it really, really well and doing a lot of amazing things. As you can see, do you all have this up there on your screen? Yes. As you can see, the money that came in, revenues was about $5 million, total expenses was just over that, and a change of $453,000. That, we did not go over. If money is not spent, we get to roll it over. It doesn't disappear. Like some budgets, the money disappears. That's not the case for this. We rolled it over, and we paid for our $5.7 million of expenses. And there's a lot of good stuff happening. In the fire department, they have nine additional personnel, full-time equivalent benefited persons because of this money. Eight of them are firefighters. One is administrator for the fire department. And that's big to have a small department like ours and have another eight firefighters is huge. It also pays for a lot of apparatus. The last few years, we bought one of those tiller trucks, the big long trucks with the person in the back and the ladder. That's several million dollars, and we were able to buy one, and we're now buying our second one. So, or at least I've told, have been told we are. We bought two new pickup trucks, a defibrillator, all kinds of stuff for personnel and protective equipment. And on training, we're sending three people through paramedic training. That's a long process. It's a lot of work, but we're able to pay their salaries and put them through that medic training. Onto the next slide, building maintenance. Some of the roll-up doors at our fighter stations, those are big, heavy doors. We are able to replace those for safety and workability function. And then the one thing that I really am proud of our fire department for is supporting mental health. We have access for the families as well as the firefighters to get mental health support, and that's big. Watsonville Police Department, we have 13 people hired by the police department with Measure Y, and that's also really huge. It pays for basic police academy recruits, the field training program, how to extract information out of cell phones, at least lawfully, and get the training on how to do that. And next slide, specialized equipment. The police department has a drone, and they don't spy on people, actually. People think, oh, the police are spying on me. They look over for lost kids in the park or other aerial surveillance and searching for things from the air and accidents. They can go back and take an aerial photograph of, say, an intersection or something happened and get evidence for that. It helps pay for officers to go out into the field, out into the community, agua con la chota, water with a cop, similar to coffee with a cop, the post incident team that is, goes into the community and works with people to tell them what happened and to talk about the incident and provide care and how to get counseling if they need it or want it. National night out, the cadet program is alive and well because of Measure Y, as well as the youth academy. And the next slide, you can see all the positions, the seven police officers, police specialists, property technician, crime analyst, program coordinator, admin analyst, and media relations person, all filled with Measure Y money. And the one I'm most proud of is the Caminos Program. We, to, to date, we've taken in 261 youth into the program, 205 have passed. And of those 205, 89% have not reoffended. And that is really big for our community. And I wanted also to thank our partners in this program, PVPSA, Santa Cruz Office Education, Police Activity League's PVUSD, and of course, the probation department are all working together to help reduce crime in our city because of Measure Y. Lastly, our last department, small but mighty Parks Department, they only get 8%, and that's not a lot, but they sure make use of it, which equates to about $400,000. And the Parks has done amazing things with Measure Y money. After-school programs, free after-school programs and free, what do they call it, the passport to fund membership. So finance is not a barrier for after, after-school kids to come out and get involved with a lot of activities. And then the next slide, you can see that green space there in the middle. I'm not going to read it all, all those bullet points of all the things they've done, karaoke night, football party, Ohana Day, Bite of Reality, Entertainment Night, and Midsummer Carnival, and a whole lot of other stuff. And they are making really good use of their money, their allocations. And of course, fixing playgrounds. Playgrounds don't stay in one piece forever. You have to fix them. They're constantly breaking down. The next page is another whole list of equipment and things that they have purchased there. So all in all, Measure Y is really doing well. So, all in all, Measure Y is really doing well. Our Oversight Committee meets twice a year and hears reports from these departments. We ask a lot of questions. And for the last several years, Measure Y has been audited by an independent contracting auditing company, Maze and Associates, and they have found no findings, meaning they can't find anything wrong with how we're using this money and how we're supposed to use it by statute as well. So, a big round of applause to our departments and our finance folks who oversee this. And I could take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Dutra?
I just have a comment. First of all, I say thank you, Eric, for all the hard work and dedication you give to our community. You've been doing this for several years, as long as I've been here. You've been very involved. So, I first of all, want to say thank you for that. We rely on our community members to step up and help make this community run, so thank you for doing that. I also want to say thank you to the community for passing Measure Y. This is, you know, especially important during times like this when we're faced with cuts and possible cuts from the federal government, that we are self, we have a self-help. We are self-helping ourselves to make sure that in this situation, the community felt that the firefighters, the police officers, and that our public recreation department needed to be funded at a level to ensure that they were sustainable. So, I want to say thank you to the community. And because of that, because of us putting this tax on ourselves, you have provided a list of some really great things that have happened. It looks like, you know, our police and fire are being spoiled, and we love that because they are taking care of us and these public service roles. And then also, all these free youth programs, because I remember the day when people were saying, my kids can't go to these programs because they're too expensive. And now we're offering a way for these kids to participate in these programs where it's not costing anything. So, this is what I really, this is the definition of community, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item 7G, Community Investment Tax Measure Oversight Committee Sales Tax Report will be done by former Chair Vasquez Flores.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. I'm Beatriz Vasquez Flores, the committee chair. I'm pleased to chair the Revenue Measure Oversight Committee's first annual report for the year ending June 30, 2025. In the 2022 primary election, Watsonville voters approved the this half-cent sales tax, known as Measure R. This measure went into effect on March 1st, 2023. The revenue from Measure R is intended to support various community improvements, including investing in repair and expansion of aging parks, maintaining after-school and gang probation programs, fixing potholes, and expanding library services. Fiscal year 2024, '25 is the second full year of Measure R revenue proceeds and expenditures. So, unlike Measure Y, we're just a baby. Next. As you can see on table one, it shows the revenues and operations for fiscal year '24, '25. The actual revenues that came in were $3.5 million. As you can see, we have a lot of projects for now and in the future. Therefore, the city is working currently with a municipal advisor to issue lease revenue bonds, and I think that's already getting signed, to be able to fund the funding gap for the Ramsey Park Renaissance project, as well as to provide a secondary funding source to the City Plaza project, which also has a $3.5 million estate grant. This sales tax measure is a powerful reflection of our community commitment to investing in itself and building a stronger future. It is because of their support that in the next year, we will be, we will have the resources available to push forward projects that improve quality of life. The finance department is currently working with all the departments on the '25, '26 budget. In this next year budget, we can fund two very exciting projects, which are a real measure of turning big ideas into real progress to our community. We will be funding our streetlight project citywide, which will, at $1.9, which will replace all the city lights, and the library rooftop project at $2.6 million. Measure R is also providing funding for the expansion of the library services. The main library is now open every Saturday from 12 to 4:00. It also provides funds for the library link, which provides library material for those people that cannot come to the library and they can't leave their home. Parks and Recreation Department has many, many projects that is being funded by Measure R. One of those is the cleaning of the restrooms. It provides for two new part-time temporary employees to provide additional cleaning of restrooms throughout the park system. It also has been used to replace the basketball backboards, replacement of irrigation controllers at Berga Parks, replacement of pavers at Callahan Park. And of course, you already mentioned the conversion of the tennis courts at Callahan Park to pickleball courts. And as you said, the grand opening was very successful and very well attended. I know for a fact that a lot of people were waiting for this, including my sons, who are avid pickleball players. This Measure R also helps with many programs for youth. And it helps subsidize a lot of the contracted classes to at least 50% to make these specialty classes more affordable to our community youth. For example, skate dogs, skateboarding camps, skyhawk sports, quicksilver swimming, pickleball, tennis, cheer and hip-hop dances, and many others. Our Public Works Department is using all the funds for repaired work of our main arterial roads. As many of you know, Green Valley Road Improvement Project is underway. This is partially funded by Measure R. Green Valley Road is a vital arterial serving over 20,000 vehicles per day. This project will reconstruct 2,200 linear foot of roadway, as well as replace curb ramps and provide a new audible pedestrian signal at Carnation Drive. And other projects that have been completed with funding from Measure R are the Olauni Parkway from Main Street to West Beach Street, Green Valley Road from Kerry Street to City Limits, Bridge Street from Blackburn Street to Beck Street. This concludes my report. But as you can see, there's many, many other projects that Measure R is funding. So, please take a look at the report. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, comments from council? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you, just a question and a comment. But I first want to say thank you, Beatriz, or I like to say Bee, for your continued being a champion for our community. You've been doing this for decades, and we appreciate you. Did I hear that a portion of this is going to go towards the lighting that we're going to be doing, the lighting assessment? Well, I appreciate that. This is something the community really wants. I hear this, as I'm out in the community, lighting has been a conversation. And the fact that we're actually being able to address it and to replace all the lighting throughout the city, I know that the people are very excited about that. So, again, because of this tax, that's a self-help tax that we've done, we are helping move our community forward, and we place this tax on ourselves. We're going to be able to be doing a whole new lighting system throughout our community. And so, thank you for chairing this and making sure the funding is going to important projects like this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Montesino?
Yes, I also want to thank you for your continued community commitment to our community. So, and for all the hard work that the committee is doing, because these are projects that have been greatly needed. You know, especially lighting, but street, all the street improvements, the library. Just want to thank you.
Councilmember Ari Parker?
Thank you, mayor. I really just want to say it's nice to see you, Bee. And it's nice that the, that this committee is getting your guidance and your knowledge. And much appreciation for you and Mr. Stern for stepping up and taking leadership in different ways. So, thank you very much.
Okay, I also want to say thank you to the Oversight Committee and your work, Beatriz. But I also want to take a moment to thank the residents who approved this measure. I think it's because of this measure that the community is seeing a tremendous amount of work being done as far as road infrastructure improvements are concerned, the ability to do the lighting assessment and moving forward with the implementation of that study, and so much more. So, thank you all. Thank you, and thank you, Bee. All right, moving on to item 8.0, Consent Agenda. All items appearing on the Consent Agenda recommended actions are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor welded public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. So, before I take it out to the public, do we have any clarifying questions from council?
At this time, I'd like to, in an abundance of caution, remove item 8C, as I am an employee of the lessy. Say that 10 times fast. I am an employee of the Santa Cruz District Attorney's Office. So, in an abundance of caution, I will be recusing myself from this item. And I would like to make a motion for items 8A, B, D through P.
Thank you.
To approve.
Okay, so before we take a second, unless there are any other questions from council, I'll take it out to the public. All right, do we have any members of the public who wish to address council under this item?
Antonio Rivas, and I just want to really, my full support approving the facilities, you know, Resolution 1, 2, 3, and 4, and 8H. That's a very important services that we'll be able to provide to our seniors at the Watsonville Senior Center. So, I thank you in supporting that, those facilities, so they can receive those services for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any deliberation from council? I'm sorry. Okay, we have a second now. There we go. Any further deliberation from council? I would, sure. Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, I just, you know, just one comment, you know, under 8B, one of the streets is going to get resurfaced, is Harken, I mean, Kilburn Street and Ford Street. So, you know, that community has requested it for years, you know, some improvements around there, especially walkability and just access for wheelchairs. So, just want to thank you.
Okay, I also wanted to comment on 8B. Just we're hopeful that we get some good bits, some competitive bits on those projects. And also, under 8H, I want to echo the public speaker. I'm glad that we're moving this forward. I think it's, can only do good and enhance access for our elderly community to all of those services. So, with that, can I please have a roll call?
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Quidos Carter?
Aye.
Salcedo?
Aye.
And Rosco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, moving on to item 9.0. So, we did remove, we did remove item 8C. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve that item.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Quidos Carter?
Aye.
Salcedo? Oh, and Rosco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10.8, City Manager Sub디 Report.
Great. So, I have a good report tonight with highlights of what summer feels like here in Watsonville. There's a lot of summer activities that are exciting. Starting with something that was mentioned earlier, a Fourth of July parade is taking place on Fourth of July at 12:30. This year, the parade is going to start, as usual, on Freedom Boulevard and Main Street and come down to First and Rodriguez Street. But I want to thank Jessica Bibi, who's here on the audience today, for your good work and advocacy, because we're taking it. This is a great partnership between Parks and the airport. And I really appreciate Raven just also bringing this opportunity. We're taking our parade to a new level. We're going to have a flyover this year. So, there's, and it's being sponsored, and it's being sponsored because there's good work happening across departments. So, I really want to appreciate all of you doing that work. Excited for the flyover this year. So, don't miss it. Fireworks, it's Safe and Same Booth are soon to be around our community, and those are the only fireworks that are allowed in City Limits. But there are a number of illegal fireworks, and I just want to make sure that our residents know that by calling the non-emergency number that's on the screen, you can report illegal fireworks in the community. And I'll commend the incredible team in our police department that is just doing a fantastic job in doing preventive work. There's been like over 2,300 pounds of illegal fireworks that have not reached the streets in our community because of the good work being done by our police department and partner agencies in the county. So, that's good work. And please report illegal fireworks. We're going to have a team active on the streets working the Fourth of July and the week prior to it. So, that's starting soon. Next. Also, a big thank you for the advocacy of our city clerk to just inviting the county to come to Watsonville and really educate our community about elections and how people can get involved and really understanding the process of elections. And the county clerk is coming to Watsonville on July 2nd at 5:00 PM. So, you can, if you're interested in learning more about elections and how they're done, this is a great opportunity to learn more and get involved possibly. Next, good news. This is excellent news. Row work is something we all want, but it is hard while you're going through it. Green Valley has been a very busy intersection, getting over eight inches of pavement removed and replaced. And that takes a few days and it's heavy work. There are a lot of barricades, as you see on that photo. But this work, Phase 3, is completed tomorrow. So, this work is ending, the barricades will be removed, and the only final layer of two inches of asphalt will be applied overnight, so minimizing the impacted traffic during the day hours. And so, we expect June 30th to July 1st, we're going to have overnight work being done in Green Valley. And then, a couple weeks later, kind of towards mid-July, we will have the striping done to finalize Green Valley in its entirety from border to border on the city limit. So, the entire road has now been reconstructed, which is quite an achievement. It took a few years, but we're there, so celebrating that. I also want to kind of make sure that I share and sort of like talk about a mountain lion that decided to visit our community. This picture was taken at Ramsey Park, so it was right in our neighborhoods, walking around. But I want to bring awareness just as a way of safety, because we are hearing through social media, there's been sightings of the mountain lion. So, if you encounter it, just make sure that you take into account some of these. it, just make sure that you take into account some of these safety measures. Just bring your pets indoors, don't leave animals outdoors if you can. Keep an eye, a close eye on young children. And, and make sure that you call 911 if you, if you see the mountain lion around in your neighborhood. But if you do encounter it, please don't run, don't make eye contact, spread your arms, and make loud noises and, yeah, but don't run. I guess it's not a lot of advice on this. This advice is coming to us from Wild Fish and Wildlife, so they are the expert, the subject matter experts on this type of situations. We also hear that there might be some baby lions around. So just stay vigilant and safe, and take care of your animals. Watsonville Academy, I just want to make sure that I put a plug in about Watsonville Academy. It's just a great opportunity to learn how the city works. Just spending nine weeks with every single city department, learning how, how we work and how we do our work. Applications are open right now. The QR code on the screen gives you access to the application. Applications are being accepted through July 11. We're hoping to have 20 to 22 residents join our next cohort of Watsonville Academy. So we're excited about that. I want to also talk about National Night Out. It's often a great opportunity. It's, it's one of our favorite times in community, just really visiting with different neighborhoods. And that happens the first Tuesday of August, and our police department and, and other city departments work together just to kind of host different block parties, barbecues, neighborhoods, get together. I just want to make sure that the community does know that applications are being accepted now until July 15. So if any neighbors want to host a block party or gathering of some sort, this is, the QR code there takes you to the application. And this is, this is when you can apply. And then we will work with, the police department will work with neighbors, making sure that, that we visit that day. So, August 5th, mark your calendars. We have talked about pickleball courts. It's definitely, I feel the pride, not only of those that attended on Saturday, but just the pride it's of having the courts. And I have a short clip on the ribbon cutting. And the Caesar work, which is awesome. Yay! So, as you said, it was well attended and definitely, you know, were there some games that morning? I missed it. But, yeah, it's awesome. Look at that. It's happening. Thank you, Parks, for the good work. And a beautiful ceremony, too, just taking care of every detail. It was, it was a beautiful Saturday morning at Callahan. And just as part of the summer, our Watsonville High Pool is officially now open for the summer. So I just want to make sure, if, if we get a hot day during the summer season, you know, it's open for free swimming, for open swim between 1:15 and 2:55, and on Saturdays from 12 to 2. And, you know, so we invite members of our community to, to take advantage of the open pool during the summer. It's a great, great opportunity. I just also wanted to say that here, it's just being edited live. I really want to thank the 31 community members, from 13 different and community-based organizations that have joined, 11 members of my team in the city of Watsonville to work on creating a homeless action plan for our community. We have done a lot of work through the past few months on really focusing on four different buckets. And that plan will be coming to the council in your meeting during August. So just look forward to that. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Councilmember Ari?
We're gonna have fun with this. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, Beatriz. I appreciate everything you talked about. Brings back lots, for a lot of people who probably have grown up here, not only participating and attending the 4th of July parade, and looking forward to that and the new flyover. Callahan Park, my babysitter was a pink house right next door to it. So it was pools then and everything else, so I used to go there all the time. But also played tennis there in high school and everything else. So I'm looking forward to the pickleball education. And the Watsonville High Pool, that's where I learned how to swim, had to take the big dive off the high dive. That was important. Also, and I know you attended, and you didn't attend, oh yeah, you did, I think you did attend, the three graduates of fire, Regional Fire Academy. And that we're gonna have three more firefighters, one with EMT experience already, you know? And it was great to see all the families and, and everybody who came there. So thank you for attending all those things and, and being a good reporter and cheerleader. I really appreciate that, because, boy, we have so many wonderful things going on, especially Green Valley Road. I'm sorry, I travel that almost every day. So the fact that you can still get by and they're still doing all that work, and I know, we took some feedback from the businesses and the people who live locally, but it's because it's such a well-used road that, you know, there's gonna be some uncomfortableness. But that, that was great that you have the plans to do it overnight versus that. And so, three weeks from now, maybe four weeks from now?
So by tomorrow, it's gonna look completely different, and then two more days overnight. And, you know, by mid-July, we will have a beautiful road. And I, it's, it's a lot of work, so thank you, Public Works.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dutra?
I kind of, I want to go right on reverse for a minute. I, the last time we were talking about measure R, I wanted to say thank you to the Mada, because that would not have happened without your leadership. And so, thank you for doing that. I wanted to just follow up on that. And I wanted to talk about the couple things you said. I have named the mountain lion Watson. And Watson has been spotted around and actually has three babies. They posted on my social media page, there's a huge conversation going on about it right now. And someone, it was behind Aloney Parkway in the slough, they said the three babies running and stuff. But also want to make it clear, because people are like, what are you gonna do with the, with the mountain lion? And I had a discussion earlier today, the mountain lion is an endangered species. We are not gonna have our police officers shoot it. It's not, that's not gonna be happening. So, you know, we do advise people to bring in their pets. You know, I've also noticed online, some pets have already, are deceased. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, you are being vigilant about your, your animals and your own personal safety. So, but, yeah, but Watson's out there. There's a lot of pictures. People are just finding, finding Watson everywhere. And they are, you know, we've seen on East Beach and, and other places. So I'm just, just, just be careful out there. I also wanted to say, looking forward to National Night Out. Thank you for all the work that you've done. Do we know how many places we have already confirmed?
Yes, I, I got that number from our assistant chief this afternoon. We have 10 neighborhoods already that signed up. But definitely, I want to extend an invitation that anyone in our community that wants to gather and be in community with neighbors and get to know your neighbors, is a wonderful opportunity to do so. And we're gonna continue to take applications through July 15.
Well, that's a great number so far. I'm hopeful that we're gonna have more. I remember back in the day, we used to have a lot of people participating, a lot of neighborhoods, I mean, and, and it's kind of dwindled down. So it's good to see we already have 10. I do know another neighborhood in my district's gonna be adding, so hopefully we'll be at 11 soon. So I wanted to say thank you for all the work that you're doing for that as well. Fireworks, I know it's a big issue right now, so thank you for that phone number. I'll be posting it. I think if we just send our officers out to any street in Watsonville, we'll be able to get people, because last night was crazy. I feel like every night's gonna be crazy, and we hear it from all of our constituents. So, but you've already gotten 2,300 pounds off the streets. That's good. What did we get last year? It was a lot more than 23. It was a whole, like, storage unit.
It was, it was less than 23. I think this year, we're already ahead with the, with the good work that is being done in advance of the 4th of July. So.
Well, didn't they get a whole storage unit last year? So I think we, we want to, I mean, aim that, aim for that again. So, because I know Ari probably hears a lot as well about fireworks. People love it in your neighborhood, right? So, but thank you for that report. Thanks for that report.
All right, any other comments? Okay.
Because I forgot, I had written it down. Fireworks, thank you very much. You know, I think, as Councilman Dutra said, I think we've done more this year than we did last year, and the proactive gotcha is, is huge, because those are all the illegal fireworks that are bombing, I know my district, you know, and we're having to hear it like a war zone. And literally, this time last year, it was every single night, it was super loud, and that is not showing up in, in District 7 that way. So maybe they moved to District 6. Okay. Every once in a while, yes, but it's nothing like it was last year. So, appreciations for the proactivity.
I, the thank you goes to the team in the police department and their vision of like addressing it early in partnership with other agencies. It's really good work being done, so all the credit goes to them. I'm just a reporter. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to item 11.0, Public Hearings, Ordinances, and Appeals. We have amend Title 5, Chapter 12, and Title 10 of the Watsonville Municipal Code. And it is being recommended by Deputy City Manager, Parks and Community Services Director Kalabak and the presentation would all, is also gonna be done by him, so.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Again, Nick Kalabak, Deputy City Manager and Parks Director for the city of Watsonville. I have some of my teammates in the audience from both Parks and PD behind me as well to help field any questions in case some things may, may come up. But what I have before you tonight is a consideration to adopt two different ordinances to repeal and replace two different sections of our municipal code. And I will talk about that next. So those two different ordinances are Title 5, Chapter 12, which is currently titled Parades. The, the suggestion or the recommendation is to change that to events on public property. And then Title 10 in its entirety, which is currently public parks, playgrounds, and recreation facilities, with a recommendation to expand that out to include public parks, public facilities, and parking lots. I'm gonna take each of these kind of one by one and then pause for questions, because they're, they're, they're two somewhat complex pieces of our code. And there's a little bit of overlap in that they both have to do with permitting of, of events. So to keep things clear, I'm gonna go through Title 5 first. And again, this is Title 5, Chapter 12. Again, currently, this, this chapter focuses solely on parades. And it was last updated almost 50 years ago, so there's, there's quite a bit of updating that needed to get done in order to bring this up to, to current standards and code. What we're proposing through these changes are to expand the ordinance to not just cover parades, but all kinds of public events. So things like concerts and festivals and, and, you know, 5K races and that sort of thing. The other reason we're proposing this is to protest constitutional rights to assemble and to speak for expressive activities. I'll talk about what that means on the next slide. And then also to codify our permitting and cost recovery mechanisms for all events. So I think, as, as many of you know, we, we currently have a permitting process for special events. It's just not codified, other than for parades currently. So we're looking to kind of just solidify those processes and make sure that they're, they're in our code. So the permitting process for special events through what we're proposing would require event organizers to pull their permit or ask, or apply for a permit 60 days prior to any events that include assemblies of 250 or more people, any event requiring street closures, or any event requiring city services such as police, street closures, traffic barriers, traffic implications, porta-potties and so forth. So I just want to, want to note that, that these, these requirements or this kind of definition of what would trigger the, the need for a permit for a special event, isn't necessarily different from what we have today. It's, again, just, just formalizing this process. And, and again, just like today, organizers of events are responsible for obtaining all other permits that they need and other approvals that they need in order to run their events safely and with approval of any other jurisdictions or, or oversight bodies. So permits for use of parks, public facilities or parking facilities. If they're closing streets, they, they have to have a certified traffic control plan. If there's applicable special use permits or amplified sound permits, they have to get those. And of course, if they have, if their event involves alcohol, they'd have to get the proper ABC licenses, proper fire inspections, and sign-offs from, you know, organizations like, or oversight organizations like Caltrans, if they're closing Caltrans highways and so forth. So here's where we kind of get into events that are, that are protected by the First Amendment. And so there are some exceptions to, to some, or for some, for some events that will not be required to get to obtain permits. And again, this isn't necessarily different than what we have today. It's, again, just clarifying language and codifying it so that we, so it's clear in our code and so that staff has clear direction on how to treat these types of events that, again, are protected by, by the First Amendment. Or, or through other just means. So for example, school activities and government events don't necessarily need to have, have permits, although most of those events end up going through the permitting process anyway, just so that all departments and necessary institutions are informed of what's going on. But these next two bullets, the small expressive activities and the spontaneous news-driven events are, are the two types of, of events that are protected by the First Amendment. So small expressive activities are conduct whose principal object is the expression of opinion, views, or ideas that obviously are protected by the First Amendment. So this could be public speaking or literature distribution, or like a small press conference where you have a small group of individuals that are, that are expressing their views. These types of activities are exempt by the First Amendment, but they also must conform to any applicable traffic regulations, laws, or controls. So for example, if they're, if they're impeding traffic or, you know, in the middle of the roadway, that would force that type of event to, to then be required to get, to get a permit. We are also saying that these types of events should, wherever practical, provide the city with four-hour notice ahead of time, so that we as city employees can, can anticipate the, the potential impact on our public infrastructure and traffic and safety and so forth. The other category of, of events that are exempt are spontaneous news-driven events within the past 48 hours. Again, this is something that's protected by the First Amendment. So an example of this could be, you know, something happens nationwide or internationally, and a group of individuals decide to, to organize a protest in, in reaction to, to that news event within 48 hours of that occurring. Again, this, this can be exempt from the permitting process as long as they're not impeding vehicular traffic that they provide four-hour notice whenever, whenever it's practical, and that they're using a space that's not already reserved. So for example, if, if the events, organizers want to, want this event to take place on the plaza, but there's already something happening there that's been pre-arranged, then they wouldn't be allowed to use that space. They'd have to, they'd have to use another public space. Violations to the section of the code would be subject to penalties set forth in our, in our, our current municipal code, and they're outlined in Chapter 2 of Title 1. And that brings me to the end of my slides for, for Title 5, Chapter 12. I'm gonna pause here for questions.
Councilmember Ari Parker?
Wow, thank you, Mayor. Okay, why 250 people? Why'd you set the limit at that?
That's a good question. We, we went back and forth with, with the, the city attorney that we worked with on, on this code. And, you know, I, I think we as staff had wanted to set that number at, at much lower. The recommendation, where we kind of met in the middle at, at a, at a higher amount, was, I think, just based on past practice or, or best practice and looking at other codes and what's kind of, kind of wistred legal battles when it comes to protecting First Amendment rights and, and gatherings. So I think that's the best I can.
Okay, well, the question I, I have for the 250, our plaza is used for many different things. Giveaway, school stuff, backpacks, you know, information. A lot of our organizations in Watsonville have team meetings there at times. A lot of our organizations in Watsonville have team meetings there at times, you know. And I'm not sure that's First Amendment stuff. That's just convenience of use stuff. So what if it's smaller, but it's regular, but it interrupts the public's ability to use the plaza, you know, the park for its initial use? And Misha's walking down, I don't know if that has anything to do with it.
I'll try to answer this real quick and then if Misha has something to add. So when I get into our discussion about the second ordinance that we're proposing, this may make a little bit more sense. The Parks Ordinance in Title 10 that I'll be discussing in the next 10, 15 minutes or so has a separate permitting process for use of our parks, including the city plaza. And the number of people for that type of, that type of permitting process is triggered at 75 people. So an event that, say, is in the plaza that doesn't require you to close streets and isn't protected by First Amendment rights, like the backpack giveaway and whatnot, that would still have to go through the park rental permitting process.
Okay. So that was it. And what are the penalties?
This one I'll look at Misha for.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. Mish Radic from the Police Department. As far as the penalties go, we have a bail schedule that we use that's set by the city clerk. So if these ordinances pass, we would work with the city clerk to get fines established and then work with our courts to implement them. Most of these are infractions, so they end up going to traffic court.
All right, so they're ticketed, basically?
Yes.
Can they do the traffic court thing where you can get it forgiven?
No, that's only for actual traffic violations.
Since that level, okay, but it's that level, is what you're saying, yes. Okay, traffic court level, okay.
And then the only thing I wanted to add about the 250 people, the way we came to that number, there's some case law that you can require a permit if it's 75 people or more. We took into account the recent protests that we've had since January. They're drawing about 200 people. We don't want to require a permit every time. We haven't required a permit for any of those, and we haven't had any issues. So we came to the number of 250. If it rose to that, if this gets enacted, then we would require a permit moving forward.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. I mean, nothing about, you know, constitutional rights aside, what you explained about the second part makes sense to me. So it's covered somewhere, we just haven't got to it yet. Okay, thank you very much, thank you both.
Okay, Councilmember Kidos Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. So just to clarify, if the space, if the plaza is reserved with going through the permitting process, and another group shows up, they're not, they can't use it. But if there are two groups, neither is permitted, they have to share, correct?
I would make that assumption, yes, because, yeah, because neither of them have precedent through a permit. And if they both are, if they're both events that are protected by First Amendment rights, then they both have right to be there.
Excellent, thank you, just wanted to clarify that. And then this is just more of a comment from the previous question. I would hope that there would be some kind of like community service option just given, I doubt that we will have that happen. But if someone were to be unable to pay, I would hope that we would have other avenues, like they could do community service or something like that. Again, I don't like, we've had a lot of protests and things like that, and I don't foresee it becoming an issue. But I would hope that there would be some, yeah, something in lieu of payment in case people are not able to pay.
And we actually do have that mechanism through our community support grant process. But the set aside for special events allows to, for event organizers to apply to use those funds to.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing that there's no additional questions, I'll take it out to the public. Do we have any members of the public? Well, actually, we should continue with your presentation and then take public comments after the fact. Yeah, but let's continue with the presentation.
Okay, so this next set of slides has to do with Title 10. Currently, this title deals with just parks. So there's three chapters in this current code. One has to do with parks, one deals specifically with Pinto Lake Park, and the other one addresses skate parks. The first two sections regarding parks in Pinto Lake were last revised in 1980, and then the skate park one was developed in 2012. So again, really old pieces of our code that we're working to update to current community needs and requests. What we are also doing is expanding the scope of this title to include not just parks, but all public facilities. So things like our public buildings, our recreation centers, our libraries, along with our parking spaces, so parking garages and parking lots as well. And then, just like Title V, this adds some protections for expressive activities. So because this is a full kind of repeal and replace, there's a lot in it, but I tried to highlight the notable updates that I think we, as city staff, have been really excited to implement because of just practical use, but also because of requests from community to be able to use our spaces differently and so forth. So the first major change in terms of prohibited activities, and specifically our parks and all of our public facilities, is prohibition of improper use of our restrooms. So we're putting that into the code. We're proposing to adjust what's in the code currently around alcohol as well, especially in our park spaces. Right now, our code prohibits alcohol in all of our parks at all times. And what we're proposing is to continue to prohibit alcohol except when you've obtained a valid city-issued permit. So if there is an event organizer that wanted to hold an event within our city parks that involved alcohol, they could potentially do that with proper permitting through the city. We are just reinstating that there's no camping on city parks or in public facilities, no fireworks in city parks. We've kind of clarified some language around the use of drones to ensure that they're used in ways that are consistent with state and federal law. And then we've added some language also that addresses vending and merchandising, especially, excuse me, in terms of sidewalk vending in our parks. We realized that that has become somewhat problematic in some of our spaces, like Callahan and Ramsey when it's open as well. There are quite a few protections in California for sidewalk vendors, and so we had to kind of work around the language on that to make sure that we weren't in violation of any state law. But where we've landed is that it's prohibited to offer any food or any article for sale if you're obstructing any walkways or parking spaces or fields, or if you're in the natural landscape. So that basically makes it, you know, against the ordinance to be able to sell, you know, say, food in the middle of a soccer field or to take up walkways within a park so that people can't get by. Other notable updates in some of these specific areas. So for city parks, it's prohibited, it's proposed to be prohibited to bring your dog on a sports field or a court or have them unleashed in any park except in our dog parks. In city buildings, we've added some language to clarify what kind of animals can be brought into city buildings. And so we've said that possession of animals is prohibited except for service animals. And then we've created some language also for our public parking facilities. First is that it's prohibited to remain present in a public parking facility for any purpose other than to travel to or from a vehicle. It's also prohibited to ride wheeled vehicles, bikes, skateboards, roller skates, et cetera. And then this is where we kind of get into the permitting process that's required for use of our city parks in particular. So as I alluded to earlier, for our larger parks, like the city plaza, Pinto Lake, Franch and Ramsey, any event that has 75 people or more would require a permit. I'd like to kind of just differentiate this from, say, like a picnic permit, which is also part of our rental schedule. We have a few different areas within our parks where there's picnic tables with barbecue pits that are rentable that members of the public can request permits for, even if they have less than 75 people, just so they have exclusive use of that space. So that's a little bit different. Other events that would require permits are any events that exclude the general public or involve paid admission, or if somebody is wanting to use a space outside of operational hours, so basically after sunset in most cases in any of our parks or our buildings outside of operational hours. Anytime there's any kind of use of structures, especially in a park, like a bounce house, porta potties, event tents, and whatnot, would all require permits. And then if there was an event that was wanting to incorporate fireworks or camping, those would also require permits. Chapter 2 of Title 10, we are expanding. Right now, it currently only addresses skate parks. And now that we have a new pump track, we're adding language about pump tracks to this part of the code also, just so that both of those types of facilities are covered under this section. And it also establishes use and rental rules and aligns our pump track with updated safety and conduct standards to match our skate park. Violations, kind of the same process for this title as well as in Title V. So again, recommended action is to adopt two ordinances to repeal and replace Title V, Chapter 12, along with the entirety of Title 10. We brought both of these ordinances to the Parks and Recreation Commission on June 4, and they voted to recommend that the council approve both of these as well. And so that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I'd happy to take any additional questions.
Councilmember Ari Parker.
Just a question about the camping thing. Is it camping only where it is allowed? Or can they request a permit for outside hours camping in any of our parks?
Yeah, potentially, so, I mean, this.
Oh, that's a big one.
This generally, this generally covers Pinto Lake, where we allow RV camping.
Right.
But if, for example, and we've done this ourselves as the city through the Parks and Rec Department, where we've hosted family camp nights, say, like on the soccer field at Ramsey Park. So if there was, say, a church group or a boy scout group that wanted to do something like that, we could consider an event like that to take place.
And how many times have we done that?
It's been, it's been a long time. But I remember kind of mid-2000s or so, we ran that program, probably three or four years.
Okay. And it was for established groups?
It was for just families who wanted to come out and have an overnight experience in the park without having to go too far.
Okay, but it was run by the city as a program?
Yes.
Do we have that in the language?
So city programs, for the most part, are exempt from having to go through the permitting process for those types of things.
No, I'm asking because if you put camping in there and you don't put any caveats for it, and the only other time we've done it is if the city has created this special event and people have done it, now we're just opening it up to whatever anybody wants?
I don't think necessarily, so you'd have to.
That's what I sneak clarification on, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, you'd have to come through our park rental permitting process in order to run an event like that. So, I mean, we would require that they have, you know, all the necessary things that they would need to be able to run an event like that safely. So, you know, if I just wanted to do that on my own, I'd have to still rent porta potties and, you know, pay for lighting and all those types of things.
So that requirement, you have a list of requirements that are needed?
Correct, for any type of event like that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's covered somewhere. It's not covered in this, but it's covered in the policies?
In our overall policies for park rentals and for special events, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Sancido.
So hypothetically, someone with an RV couldn't use this ordinance to just say, "I want to camp at Pinto Lake, so I want to use this process." That's not what this is for?
Well, with an RV, you technically can at Pinto because there's an RV parked there. But you wouldn't be able to pull a permit and say, "Park at Ramsey."
Okay, that's what I mean, thank you.
Councilmember Montesino.
Yeah, could you move to the slide where the parking structures? This one here? So rider use of wheel vehicles, bicycles, skateboarding, rolling skates, inline skates, and scooters. Currently, we see a lot of that. So, you know, is it going to be a cop? I mean, like, we're making rules, are they going to be enforceable? You know, are, you know, because some kids just hang out just to see the sunset. Like, I'm just trying to grasp, is conceivable to have, you know, someone ticket them or cite them?
Yes, I'd probably say that, you know, like most things in our code, like this is here so that we can enforce it when needed. You know, will we have somebody policing the parking garage at all times? Likely not. But if there was a situation that arose that, you know, probably came to the awareness of PD that was causing some major safety concerns, then it gives them at least the mechanism to enforce on that.
Councilmember Dutra.
I think, I mean, thank you, Nick, for bringing this. I think my concern, you know, as, and I'm glad we're cleaning this up because it seems like it was a long time ago that we haven't touched it. But, you know, we're creating these ordinances and like the one for the wheeled vehicles and the parking garage. I mean, that's violated every single day. I mean, it's really, it's really a safety issue. I agree with Councilmember Parker. And so I think it frustrates myself, and I'm sure it frustrates other council members, when we create ordinances and they're not enforced. And this is a conversation I've had with the city manager. Like, you know, I think that we have to, if we're going to be creating ordinances, they have to be enforced, that's the bottom line. Otherwise, you're wasting our time. So if we're going to be creating this, we're going to expect it to be enforced. Right?
I think Misha will agree with me that if reported violation occurs, they are more empowered to be able to cite those individuals because we have something codified in our books that allows them to issue a citation versus if we don't have it and I call them, it's just.
But if we see it, then we just turn our head unless it's reported. That's what I'm hearing. Because you're going to see it a lot. I'm sure you might go outside right now and see it, you know?
Good evening again, Mish Radic, Police Department. As far as this issue goes, we can, I can tell you that for the last month or so at least, we've been patrolling both parking garages three times a day on foot and in vehicles. Anybody that doesn't belong here, that kind of falls within these things, that isn't parking or leaving their car, this kind of gives us the authority to move them along. I'm not aware of any citations being issued. That's not our goal normally, is to cite somebody the first time. Our goal is, hey, what are you doing here? Why are you here? Leave. If we're dealing with the same person over and over again, that's where it turns into a citation or possibly an arrest at some point, which we have done in the past in parking facilities and city facilities for a continual problem.
I showed up here, I don't know, one time not too long ago, and a kid had his bike on the ledge. I mean, I'm thinking, what the heck? You know what I'm saying? Like, he wasn't on it, but he was rolling it across, right? So A, if he, in his mind, thinks it's cool to like get on it and ride along the edge and falls the wrong way, he's not going to make it, most likely. Or B, he could drop the bike and it could injure someone below. So, you know, I think I have a further, we need a further discussion on the parking garage in general and the safety. But I really think that we have to, when we see kids doing this, like we have to, or whoever, adults, you know, enforce this because someone's going to get hurt if we don't, if this kind of behavior continues. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ari Parker.
So Misha, there's a huge amount of kids on skateboards because I've almost hit a couple, and I'm going below the speed limit of what you. Because they'll come down quietly, whether they hear us or not, and then boom, you're turning and, you know, they've wiped out trying to get out of my way. And I'm on the right side, and I'm going whatever it is. And the teacher and me, you know, I open the window and say, "Dudes, what are you doing? You know, this is dangerous. Cars can't always stop." That scares me tremendously to know that kids are up there doing that. But, so, do we have any cameras in there? Yeah, we have cameras. So if we did report it at a certain time, at a certain level, then you could look at the camera, and if somebody else reported it a second time. Because I totally get the warning thing. That's what I, that's a part of my profession, that you warn and expect knowledge to be imparted. But when it doesn't, you know, then, okay. I know, it's hard to do, but the idea is, it really scares me when people are, and there's so many kids that do the skateboard thing down, and they do it at certain times of the day. And it'd be great if your car wasn't there, if just a police officer just kind of walked in.
We do it both in vehicle and on foot. They alternate, they check stairwells at both garages because we've had issues at both garages.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I know we have cameras. We should let them know we have cameras.
We're working on, again, whatever happens with this ordinance, we're working on updated signage for both garages that kind of lay out a lot of the rules. The skateboards, some of that stuff's in there. I think we just added like wheeled vehicles and things like that to it, newer things. But I believe skateboards, bicycles, and roller skates were on there already, but scooters aren't, I don't think.
Okay. All right. So if there's no other questions from council, I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council on this item? All right, seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for two separate motions and some deliberation if any.
I'll move to repeal and replace Title V and Title X.
Okay, so we have two separate motions. So the first motion would be to introduce for first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text and ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 12 of the Watsonville Municipal Code relating to parades. Can you get a motion for that one?
I did.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Giroz Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion to introduce a first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text and ordinance amending Title X relating to public parks, public facilities, and parking facilities of the Watsonville Municipal Code.
I'll do my motion again to repeal Title X.
Okay, can we get a second?
And replace. Go ahead, read it. Hold on. You're getting yelled at by that. Okay.
Introduce for first reading by title only, seven, top six.
Number seven.
Number seven, okay. I will, by motion, introduce for first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text and ordinance amending Title X relating to public parks, public facilities, and parking facilities of the Watsonville Municipal Code. Will it be a second?
My motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you. Can we have roll call?
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Giroz Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11B, recommended budget for fiscal year 25 years, 25 to 27, and related actions recommended by Administrative Services Director Duran. And she will be also providing tonight's report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Marissa Duran, City of Watsonville's Finance Director, and I'm here to present the budget for fiscal year 2526. This proposed budget reflects months of collaboration, careful analysis, and it also aligns with our City Council goals, maintains essential services, invests in our community, and ensures fiscal responsibility. Today's actions include approving a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2526 budget, including our transfer of funds, five-year capital improvement, and position changes as summarized in the staff report. It also asks you to approve the proposition for GAN limit and an ordinance to instruct County of Santa Cruz to levy and collect property taxable, property tax on taxable property within the City of Watsonville for a retirement fund. It authorizes the expenditure of the successor agency housing, low and moderate income housing funds, and also a resolution to find the use of the taxes allocated from Watsonville 2000 redevelopment project area or and will be used in the project area. Approve a resolution that sets fees for airport and Parks and Rec Community Department. This is a budget overview. Tonight, we're asking you to appropriate $309,494,957. Of that, $122,579 are for our general fund, 42.3 are for our special revenue funds, our debt service fund is $1.8 million, our enterprise funds are $116,500,000, internal service funds $25.8 million, and our private purpose trust fund is $494,000. This does represent a drop from our previous proposal as we did drop some of our carry forward capital in the enterprise funds. This is a budget by fund. Again, as a reminder, general fund is higher this year due to our capital investment, followed closely by the enterprise funds at 38%, then our special revenue funds at 14%, and our internal service funds at 8%. Our general fund does represent a balanced general fund. The general fund serves as the city's primary operating fund and supports the critical public services that residents rely on every day. Our biggest revenue for the general fund is our sales taxes at $20.7 million, followed by property taxes at $15.6 million. Then we have our fines, fees, and charges. These are our departmental charges at $8.5 million. And we have use of property, which is our investments and lease revenue, at $4.1 million. Our transfers in and out, this is mostly retirement tax, $4.7. And then this year, we also have our other financing sources, which is our bond at $12 million. This is our uses of the general fund. The biggest part of the use for the general fund is our public safety, police coming in at $24.7 million, followed by fire at $9.4. Due to our high capital, we do have $20 million in the general fund and almost $10 million in our Measure R fund. Key items that we had to do to balance our operational budget for the general fund is we did remove 11 vacant positions. We also implemented a contingent budget of a 1% reduction of operational expenditures for the fiscal year. This saved us about $450,000. Our capital improvement program for the next five years is illustrated here in numbers. In the first year of 2526, we are asking to appropriate $16.4 million in new capital asks. Let's talk about, a little bit about our other funds. We have our special revenue funds. Our library is asking to appropriate $5.1 million. Our ARPA funds are $7.8 million. Gas tax is $2.3. SB 1 is $4.4 million. Sales tax Measure Y is coming in at $7.3. And our Measure D is $5.7 million. This is our enterprise fund asks. Our wastewater fund is asking for $40.7 million. Our water fund is almost $50 million. Airport is at $4.5 million. Solid waste is at $20.5 million. And fiber optic fund is $77,000. Our internal service funds, our MSC is asking for $3.2 million. Workers' comp liability is coming in at $6.5 million. Health insurance across all our funds is $11.1 million. And IT services are $4.9 million. Again, as a reminder, our considerations and risks are our general fund revenues, our sales tax being the number one revenue source provides some volatility to the general fund. Our UAL payments are projected to increase. We're currently working on our class and comp study and negotiating with all of our bargaining groups. We're also, our overtime costs for police and fire continue to be a strain. And then we see opportunities in the form of economic development and also new housing opportunities that will increase our property tax revenue. And that represents the end of my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Do we have clarifying questions from council? Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, I was just looking at the airport fees increase. I got a few questions if the airport manager's here. Oh.
Look, you're surprised.
Good evening, Rayvon Williams, Airport Director. May I help you?
Yeah, and I apologize, I should have, I should have asked this, I think, before. It's like, how are we averaging on hangar, you know, rental rates versus our, you know, competitor airports?
Okay, that's a fair question. We compare ourselves to Hollister and Salinas. We look at the hangar structures themselves, the number of hangars, the age of the hangars, facilities that they provide in the hangars, electricity, water. We are in the middle. Salinas is a higher rate. We're in the middle, and Hollister's a lower rate.
And I saw on the chart, on number 13, commercial, mocus, view, floor rate. Is that a cent?
That's correct.
So what, explain that to me.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Because it just stood out to me like-
No, it's fair enough. So there are some aircraft, I feel like I'm yelling, so I'm going to speak a little lower. There are some aircraft that don't use aviation fuel. They use fuel from a gas station. The FAA regulations require that a sponsor cannot limit an individual from fueling their aircraft with gas from 7-Eleven or Chevron. However, because we are the only fuel concession on the field, we can charge them a fee to use that gasoline. We require that they, before they bring fuel to the field, that they sign a document and that they get training from the fire department so that they're fueling the aircraft in a safe manner. But the regulations allow us to charge them a fee for not using our fuel, but using fuel off, from the street. It's a standard charge that's charged across the country.
Wow. And how are we doing on the rates, the fuel that we sell, like, on average for our-
Okay, okay. So we buy fuel and we sell fuel. So we have a margin model that we use at the airport. Every week, we receive the current, what's called the spot price, I'm not trying to get into trading, but we kind of approach it that way. We ask our fuel provider every week to tell us what's fuel selling for. Every week since 2013, we've tracked the fuel prices, and we've learned over time that fuel sales, fuel is a seasonal pricing, just as our use is seasonal. The summer flying time is between, or the flying time is between April and October. So we set our margins so that we have enough to support the enterprise fund. So we have three types of fuel that we sell. There's the base price. And then on top of that, we have a target margin. It's a margin that we want regardless. And then on top of that, we have an uplift margin. That's the margin that we can change for things like fuel sales, airport open house. But we always keep the target margin. The margin numbers are proprietary, so when people ask me what our margins are, I'm just like other airport managers, I don't want to tell people what my margins are. But our margins are healthy enough so that we are able to support the enterprise fund by having an uplift.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Councilmember Ari Parker?
But not for you, Rayvon, so thank you very much, sir. Could we go back to the elephant on the ball? This is my lighthearted question. What's that supposed to represent?
A balanced budget.
Oh, I know I get it, balance, but which one's the budget and which one? Okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to have humor. Okay, so how are we preparing? I know the school district budget, we're always preparing to have issues, and so there's got to be a backup to it. How are we preparing for holes in our general fund that may develop?
We have strong fiscal policies and we have funded reserves, and those should help us weather.
And our funded reserves are at a percentage or at a standard number?
Yes, we have 20%.
20% of our general budget?
Are our general fund operation expenditures, yes.
Okay, all right. And do you happen to know the ballpark of that?
About $12 million.
$12 million, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, seeing that there's no additional questions, I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address council on this item? All right, seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
I'll make the proper motion to, we do. So action of joint resolutions to the City Council and the City Council in the capacity as a successor agency. So can I just say like 1 through whatever, 10, 13?
Yes, yes, we're going to help you. That's a lot.
All right, can we get a second?
One second.
All right, roll call, please.
Can I do a comment?
Sure. Hi. Oh, okay, I'm going to clarify the motion after you do, but go forth.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, we've come a long way. I think we're surpassing $60 million of investment in our community, and that we should be joyful for that. I mean, our recent improvement in District 1, Callahan Park, you know, but other things are coming in roads and just investments in our community. We have to celebrate that, you know, because we don't do that enough, you know? And, you know, I know the Sentinel doesn't do it for us, you know, so we have to like be proud of what we're doing tonight, investing in our community. And, you know, in a year, they're going to see, you know, Ramsey Park open, they're going to see hopefully new lighting, wayfinding, or placeta, all of this infrastructure, you know, stuff that we haven't seen. And like I said, tonight, I think we should be very celebratory on all our efforts. Thank you.
I second that.
All righty, so I just want to clarify with Councilmember Montesino that the motion was on the agenda, item 11B, actions number seven through number 13.
Six.
Number six, number six through number 13, correct?
Yes.
Great.
Ready for roll call?
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Giroz Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12.0, new business, Watsonville Police Department study by Matrix Consulting Group, and the staff report will be provided by Police Captain McKinley.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Orozco, City Council members, city staff. With me this evening is Matrix Consulting Group President Richard Brady and Senior Consultant Tim Donahoe. They're sitting right here. They will be sharing the results of the Watsonville Police Department study that was conducted by Matrix. The background for the reason for the study is the City of Watsonville has not conducted a comprehensive assessment of its police operations for over 20 years. This is a requirement of our Measure Y, our public safety sales tax, and listed as one of the recommendations in our 2021 City of Watsonville Ad Hoc Committee on Policing and Social Equity final report, is to help ensure police management of operations are efficient and services are meeting committee needs. In February of 2024, the City of Watsonville commissioned Matrix to conduct the assessment. Matrix was chosen due to its extensive experience in conducting similar assessments in over 400 police departments nationwide, including the San Francisco Bay Area. In March of 2024, Matrix- In March of 2024, Matrix began its assessment. During this time, it has interviewed various stakeholders, including city staff, Watsonville Police Department staff, conducted employee surveys, and gathered data from city GIS, city community development, and Santa Cruz Regional 911 as part of its research. The assessment findings and recommendations are now available. The report relates to strategic plan goals, committee engagement, and well-being, public safety, and efficient and high-performing government. There are no current financial impacts to the city. At this time, staff is only recommending counsel except the Watsonville Police Department's study report. Some of the recommendations were already implemented during the study, while others should be considered over the next decade to meet the future service needs of the community. It's now time for the Matrix presentation.
Thank you. This is on, right? Hi, good evening, Mayor Orozco and council members. I'm Richard Brady. I am the president of Matrix Consulting Group, and I led this assessment of the police department. Next slide. I'll expand a little bit to begin this presentation to talk about the work that we do for our local government and police clients. We have been in existence since 2003. This is our 23rd year. We provide many services to our local government clients. But our public safety and especially our police experience is by far our largest service area for our public sector clients. We've conducted over 400 police departments, about a third of them in California, and the rest elsewhere around the country. We worked in 45 different states and three provinces in Canada. Importantly, more than just finishing studies, we're proud of our implementation rate and our recommendations, which is generally about 80 to 85%. Next slide, please. Our scope of work was extensive. It's represented by this linear chart here. It shows that when we got started in the study about the middle of last year, we had an extensive foundation-setting process for the study, where we extensively interviewed within the police department, certainly command staff, certainly mid-managers and first-line supervisors, but many line staff as well. We came out and did ride-alongs within the city. We interviewed many non-supervisory or management staff one-on-one, because that gave us a better understanding of program services and constraints to providing services right now. We also collected a great deal of data during that period, much of it from the computer-aided dispatch records management system, but other kind of data as well, showing human resources utilization, costs, and things like that. We summarized this first phase of the project with a descriptive profile, which enabled us to show the department that we understood its structure, its staffing, key roles and responsibilities in staff, and key programs, service delivery. At about the same time, we got employee input, not just through interviews, but through an employee survey, an anonymous online employee survey. About 60% responded, and they provided a lot of input to us on staffing levels, about planning for services, about feedback they get from the community, and how to improve service delivery in the city as well. From that point, we used the data and the input that we received to develop an assessment, first of all, current staffing, with the workloads that you've got right now. How many staff do you need for each function? How should they be deployed? How should they be supervised and led? And that led to an important interim deliverable that we reviewed with the police department. Once that was accepted, because that was our foundation for examining what future needs were, we met with planning staff to understand the changes that are happening within the city over the next 10 years, especially relating to downtown and downtown revitalization, but also residential development elsewhere around the city. And we used that information and the foundation that we developed in the current staffing analysis to project staffing over the next 10 years. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about patrol for a bit here, and then my colleague Tim will talk about the other parts of the police department. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking about patrol, because it's the largest part of the police department. It's the most visible part, and it's the part of the department that has the most community engagement. So the first thing we looked at were call-for-service workloads. These are the requests for service that the community makes of the police department through 911 or some other measure. And it's an important variable to understand at first, because while we put a lot of weight in looking at what they do proactively, that's harder to measure. So we need to look at what they're doing when they are requested to provide some sort of service. So we looked at all the calls for service that they respond to, which is about 24,000 a year. And this graph here shows the top 10 calls for service. It's about half of all the calls for service occur in those 10 categories. And the blue lines represent for each of those 10 types of calls, when they occur in a time spectrum. So the darker the blue color, the more calls. So as you can see, most of these calls occur between about 8:00 in the morning and about 9:00 at night, or something like that. And that's going to be important to keep in mind for something that happens later. The other thing that's important to consider as you're looking at this is there's not a lot of, there's no major crime in this. It's mostly quality of life, minor disturbances, some alarms, and citizens assist. Next slide, please. So where we're going, the important variable to get to in the analysis of field services is what they do with the rest of their time. Because if you just look at calls for service, you're only measuring how efficient and effective they are at something that happened a few minutes ago. What's important in law enforcement is to anticipate problems, to work with the community, to come up with solutions that involve them in some sort of partnership, to make the community feel safer. That takes time. So we look at the amount of time they spend responding to calls, compare that to the total amount of time that people are deploying the field, and look at what they do at the rest of their time. The important benchmark for us is that there should be roughly equal levels of reactive time, the calls-for-service response, as well as the proactive time. So that's what we look at, and that's an important variable or element in all law enforcement analysis in this country today. Next slide, please. So this shows how much proactive time the Watsonville Police Department has right now. This graph on the right, I think, is one of the most important graphs in the entire report. It shows by day of the week in the vertical columns, by four-hour time blocks, the horizontal rows. It shows how much proactive time they have. The green color, the dark color, represents time blocks and days of the week in which they meet or exceed the amount of proactive time that we targeted. If it's not green, if it's white, they don't. So as you can see, if you look at the bottom number on the right, 32% on a 24/7 basis, it doesn't meet the target. But much worse than that is the fact that during the time of day, when people are awake and needing help, or people are awake and causing problems, they don't have much proactive time at all. There are some time blocks, like between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, where it's negative. And that means that they're stacking calls so that the next few hours they can handle the calls, which is going to impact response times. So this is a very significant finding, that they weren't proactive, didn't have the ability to be proactive during the most important times of the day. Next slide, please. So it is important to look at what they did with that time. And the good news is that it is used to generate activity. This chart here on the right, like the call-for-services chart that I showed earlier, shows officer-initiated activities in that same grading based on the time of day for the top 10 types of calls for service. An important finding of this is that, while 8,500, roughly, officer-initiated activities, sounds pretty good, and it's a large number each day, it's only about a third of the number of calls for service there are. Many of the communities we work with, it's equal to the call-for-services number, or no less than about 3/4 or 1/2. So that means that they don't have enough time, especially during those peak activity times of the day, to be involved with the community. So they are involved in traffic stops and bike stops and foot patrols and other kinds of traffic and other kinds of activities. But it's not enough time to do the things that are important to make people feel safe. Next slide, please. So our recommendations to help address this have a number of elements to it. The first thing is to make some modest adjustments to how they're deployed by shift, by altering by an hour or two when the three shifts start and end. Keep the same 10-hour shift, but alter it a little bit so that they're able to take hours that have excessive amounts of green associated with it, lots of proactive time, and shift that proactive ability to different times of the day. The second thing that we've recommended here is the addition of one officer to most likely be deployed on the graveyard shift on the busiest days of the week. I'm going to tie this together. These are two recommendations together with the next slide. Next slide, please. Okay, alternative response. If there's anything that has really stuck in terms of change in law enforcement in the last five years, it's alternative response. It's recognizing that police officers don't need to respond to everything, that you need their training, their experience to handle higher-priority safety and dangerous types of things, and that many of the lower-priority types of things, many of the non-crime types of things, can be handled by different kinds of employees. And that's both cost-effective, and it helps put the task with the kind of employee that can handle it. The Watsonville Police Department has experience doing this. You have police service specialists, two you've hired in the last few years, to do a wide variety of things, including handling some calls for service. You also have recently, while we were conducting this study, implemented a homeless outreach team. But right now, the police service specialists aren't handling a lot of calls, 300 calls. That really helps to some degree. But what we did in our analysis, and this is summarized in the chart to the right, that shows that there's about 1,800 calls that they could respond to. Lower priority calls, many non-crime calls, but many property crimes that maybe are misdemeanors, or there's no suspects or leads or witnesses or anything like that. Maybe it happened a couple of days ago, and you just need a report that a police service specialist can respond to. So we are recommending an additional two police service specialists to assist with that from those 10:00 in the morning to maybe 8:00 or 9:00 at night, seven days a week. Those three things, plus, well, it's those three things, will have a dramatic impact on patrol operations. It would have the effect of raising the 32% to 39%. It's still not reaching that 45% level, but it's doing a much better job. It's much closer to be able to do it, and we view it as a cost-effective solution as well. So that is patrol. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Tim Donahoe, who's going to talk about the other divisions within the department. Tim?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Could you switch the slide, please? Thank you. Tim Donahoe, Mr. Consultant with Matrix. I'm going to speak about the other divisions outside of your patrol. The first one being the Community Services Division, which houses your traffic unit and your other various support units, like Community Services, your community programs, and your Police Activities League. I'd like to take a minute to talk about your traffic unit. Although we didn't put any data on the slide, the report kind of notes that over the three-year average, Watsonville's averaging about 40 accidents or traffic collisions each month. And out of those collisions, about 10 of those are alcohol or drug-related. Your current staffing, well, we recommend increasing your current staffing by two officers to focus on things like your DUI enforcement and things like that, that really take a lot of time away from your patrol officers as well as your normal traffic enforcement. As well as, it's not indicated in this slide, but we also recommend increasing your traffic unit by one traffic investigator to focus on hit-and-run accidents, your fatal accidents. Those type investigative skills take time. They take a lot of training. Your hit-and-run accidents have about, you have on average about 10 a month as well. So I think focusing in investigative skills towards those will decrease those and concentrate on education enforcing, or enforcement in the public sphere. Next slide, please. Your Professional Standards Division houses your training unit, your Internal Affairs Unit, your recruitment hiring and retention units. Your internal affairs cases in a three-year period went from about 14 to 25. Your current model, or the police department's current model, is to have a captain as well as a sergeant part-time, kind of collaboratively complete investigations. Internal affairs investigations are very time-consuming. We're recommending that that sergeant position transition to a full-time internal affairs investigator position so your captain can focus on your executive-type duties and tasks. Your records unit, while they're currently staffed appropriately, there's a lot of paper reports that they use. So we recommend exploring options to make their unit a little more digital. Next slide, please. Your Special Operations Division, which kind of houses your investigative units, your special investigations, your detectives, as well as your special response unit. For investigations, we worked with the department to develop a task or investigative workload time for their cases. We know that each case, each crime that they investigate takes different times. Say, a homicide or a murder investigation is going to take several days, weeks, where your financial crimes may take, you know, 40 hours or less time than a property crime. So we take our investigative workload times to develop a model for the department. We use, similar to patrol, where we take their workload time, and then we get a net time, where we take out the vacation, training time, and all the things that take them away from their primary tasks. And we understand what the workload time, overall workload time, and that helps us analyze and determine that, how many detectives they need compared to what their investigative caseload is. So in this case, your department, we recommend that you increase your detective staffing by one to understand the workload commitments. Next slide, please. Organizational recommendations. Typically, departments your size have a captain or commander position, but they also have lieutenant positions. Your department doesn't have a lieutenant classification. Your captains on your department are as executive positions. They're handling executive community engagement-type positions. They're handling your higher-level organizational work. Your sergeants are transitioning, or they're quasi-sergeant plus handling lieutenant or a middle manager position. A sergeant position in policing is very important. That's who's first-line supervising your officers. So what we recommend is decreasing your captive positions to two and adding lieutenant positions, as well as a non-sworn middle-management position, which the department's currently hiring for. This will help align your different various units. I previously described what units were in each division. You have some support units or support elements working alongside operational units. This will help you align the various units into one structure, whether it's operationally or support role.
Time for the crystal ball. So in addition to looking at what current staffing needs are, we were asked to project staffing. And, you know, it's funny that until the past few years, this was rarely part of a scope of work. But increasingly, most of our clients are asking for staffing projections. And I think there are many reasons for that. One is increasing budget pressure. Having at least some knowledge of an order of magnitude of what's likely to be police department increases over the coming years is important to have some sort of handle on. Secondly, Secondly, many communities are growing. And thirdly, it's good to have a more factual base for using decisions that you have each year in budget to make those recommendations and support recommendations for additional staffing, rather than anecdotal type of evidence. So what we've done is we've developed a model that takes projected development within the city. In your case, both residential population outside of downtown, plus residential and much more in the revitalization of downtown, and create a model of the relationship of future populations against similar populations that you've got today. So residential population is usually a one-to-one relationship between the kind of workload they produce, and adding more houses does more of the same. Downtown redevelopment is a little more complicated because it's a lot of non-residential staff who are coming into the city as well. So when we looked at the impact of development in the city over the next 10 years, which is what we looked at, the impact of workload is greater than the population increase. So if we can go to the next page first, next. So this shows in about five-year time blocks from last year, the projected increase in population. And it's about 7% over the last few years. And again, this is information that we got from planning and community development. So if you go to the next slide, what we've done in terms of converting the workload from that population, based on the kind of development you're going to have, it's about double the impact. It's 12.5%, almost 13% increase in call-for-service workload and crime. And that trickles down to other aspects within a department, certainly in terms of administrative support and other kinds of functions like that. Next slide, please. So then we use the kind of workload-based methodologies that we use to figure out current staffing against these new workload figures in the future, to come up with the number of staff that will be needed over the next 10 years. And the report shows it by position and by function. It's a very extensive chart. And what these tables do on this page and the next page provide a summary. This one, if you go back one more page, could you go back, please? Okay, thanks. This shows the sworn staffing increase. And while we're recommending about 10 positions now in the various functions about that, both myself and Tim have been talking about, over the next 10 years, it'll be another 10 in patrol mostly, about half of it in patrol, and then a few in traffic and community services functions. Next slide. So it would be a mistake to just look at sworn staffing, and I think many departments in California and around the country, especially the last five years, 10 years, have neglected civilian or professional staff and putting a premium on the sworn staff that are being hired. And that creates its own bottlenecks of work and service delivery as well. So we're recommending in total, based on the things that we've talked about the last few minutes, about three and a half positions compared to where you are right now, but another four and a half in the next 10 years, mostly in support positions. So that in a rapid nutshell is our report, 100-some pages in 20 minutes or so. So I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Councilmember Dutra.
Thank you for that report. I have a couple of questions. You know, we just, we've had, we've had a issue with having vacant positions, and a lot of them. I mean, I think we had 15 recently. So adding more positions, to me, sounds like it's, I don't know, just, I mean, I'm like, let's just, just try to like stay fully staffed for a minute, you know? I know planning in the future is important, but we, right now, in the present, we're having a hard time. So what happens to funding? Like, let's say you start increasing positions, then we can't fill them. What would happen to that funding for these vacant positions if they sit there vacant?
It depends. If there is workload, like when we had those many vacancies, we were requiring overtime of our officers, so some of that money is used to pay for the overtime that is incurred to be able to continue to carry out the work, you know, with the work of those that are higher.
Is there any leftover money? Have you noticed, have you?
Typically, that has not been the case because of the work is such that overtime kind of eats the...
Would that be for Measure Y and the...
Correct.
Both?
General fund.
General fund?
Yes.
Both of them? Okay. Okay. And then, I guess I have a couple of things. One is, I mean, I hear from the public all the time about traffic. And where are the traffic, why weren't the police enforcing these, you know, violations of people speeding? And I, it's like, I hear it all the time. And so I'm always going to our city manager, I've spoken to our chief, like, I'm like, why, what's the deal? You know, why can't we, you know, enforce, you know, traffic? Because this is a real big issue for people in our community. And the answer I get is, well, we have three officers and a sergeant, I believe, and they don't all work on the same day, and they're the first ones pulled to another issue. If something happens, they're pulled, and so, so we don't have that consistent officers for traffic. So what I want to see is that consistency. I want to see where we're not losing officers to have to go do backup to someone else when we, the public is, you know, we've had some fatalities in this community because of speeding and, you know, so I don't know how this all works into this presentation, but that's something that I want to see, you know? And I've been on this board for many years, and I've been talking about traffic patrolling for a while, so I don't know. Do you see this worked in here somehow?
Absolutely.
How it can be successful?
In at least a couple of ways. First of all, we've made direct recommendations to increase traffic enforcement through traffic, dedicated traffic enforcement staff. But whether you take three people and it's four or five people, they still can't be everywhere at once. It gets back to that proactivity graph. In no community is all traffic enforcement handled by traffic enforcement specialists. Patrol has to be part of that as well. And they don't have much time to be able to do that, particularly between about 9:00 and 9:00 o'clock. There's very little time. With the time they have, if you looked at that officer-generated activity chart that we had, traffic enforcement was, were several of the major categories in the top 10, but it's not enough. So until you can get more in traffic proactive time during especially the daytime, you're not going to be able to address that. If I can go back to your previous question for a second? The vacancy issues improving in Watsonville and around the country, I think law enforcement went through a period in 2020 and 2021, and a little bit in 2022, where it was really hard to hire anybody in law enforcement, but that's improving now. So looking forward, you should have fewer vacancies. But you will always have vacancies.
Yeah. Well, I want to, yeah. But I do want to talk about what you just said about the traffic. I think that, you know, I would imagine patrol officers do not want to be giving out traffic tickets. I feel like they probably don't think that's their job. Like, they're, you know, someone very close to me as a police officer, so I understand, I know how it works, you know? So, and if there's a lot of, you know, having to write reports, I think a lot are going to be, not want to have to participate in that kind of enforcement. So that's why I think that there has to be like officers like who are dedicated to that and be like, hey, you know, one day we can, you know, we can maybe rotate or do whatever. But right now, this is a community problem of, you know, safety for speeding or whatever it may be, and we need traffic officers. So, I mean, your thoughts?
Yeah, so the traffic enforcement officers aren't just there to write tickets. I mean, they're there to be visible in school zones, for example, at pickup and drop-off times, and other areas like high accident intersections and things like that. And not necessarily to give out tickets, but just to be visible to deter activity, plus public education and things like that. But you could take the traffic officers you have right now and double and triple them, and it's still not going to be able to handle all the problem. So over my 40 years of consulting in police services, the pendulum of specialization versus general enforcement goes back and forth. And we're coming out of a period of specialization. And you can get attitudes in patrol like it's not my job, because for many years, it's not their job. But as traffic enforcement officers have dwindled, or have been completely eliminated from many departments, patrol hasn't really picked up the slack unless you do something really stupid right in front of a police, a patrol officer. So we have to change that organizational culture. But having the proactive time is important starting point, because if they don't have it, it's a moot point. So the first-line supervisory and the management recommendations we made are all part of having an effective proactive enforcement program that includes traffic.
And I appreciate you having this conversation with me, and you are correct. I think it does have to have a change in the organizational culture. But how do you do that with an organization that many have been in there for many, many years, and then, you know, you try to implement this change in the culture? It's going to be tough.
It will be tough with some officers, but others get it. And I mean, you do have regular performance evaluations, and we're not looking, nobody's looking for quotas as against the law and things like that. But you are trying to say that with the time you have, you have a variety of proactive things that you can do in your area on your shift. And traffic enforcement is one of them. And especially if you've got schools in your area or places where some of those 40 accidents a month happen, that's where you want your patrol officers to be, as well as your traffic enforcement officers.
Is that a lot, 40, the 40 accidents?
For a community the size, it's kind of a lot.
That's a lot. So that's something we've got to work on, city manager. You know, I think that it's important that we create a safe community.
Our traffic enforcement specialist.
I can add real quick that your police officers, so we analyzed where your citations from both your patrol as well as your traffic officers were, and they are very consistent for where your traffic collisions are. We analyzed that. So that's, I think that's positive, that your patrol officers are targeting those high collision areas within your city.
So you're saying it would be worse? That's what you're saying?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, the one, we know one thing that works in policing, it's hotspot policing. In your department, your officers are focused on those high collision hotspots.
I think it also may have to educate our community as well.
Absolutely.
You know, so I think education has to go around, you know?
Absolutely. That's a huge part of your traffic enforcement program, or it should be.
Okay, and then I have one more question. And it, one of your slides talked about parking enforcement needs a dedicated supervisor, I guess. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean...
That's a recommendation based on your span of control for the increase in your traffic unit? If you, if we left that without a supervisor, and the fact that they need a supervisor, that you're absolutely right, they do, but it's based on the span of control for that traffic sergeant as well. The span of control would be way above what we recommend typically, which is seven officers for one sergeant.
So I don't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I, maybe I'm a little bit confused. Parking enforcement, is that an officer?
No, no, those are non-sworn, but they're supervised by the traffic sergeant.
Oh, okay. So, and do you, what do you, what do you see as a benefit to have, I guess, a parking enforcement supervisor? And do they have to be sworn?
No, absolutely not. We recommend that it's not a sworn officer. So your sworn officers, whether they're sergeants, lieutenants, or officers, they're typically subject to rotational policies. Your non-sworn supervisors are more apt to stay in that unit, which actually would drive your proactivity and your professionalism in that unit. So we recommend a non-sworn supervisor.
Yeah, I think a lot of us are really supportive of having this, like, parking enforcement officers in general. I mean, I hear that also as another, those are like traffic, parking enforcement. I mean, it's like hand-in-hand. So, and that doesn't have to be a sworn-in officer, so...
Absolutely not.
And I think we had two vacancies, or, so hopefully, we're filling those positions. And I'm all supportive to get another person as well, because I think we need to get back on track in the community with enforcing parking violations, so.
I agree with you, and I totally agree that that should not be a sworn officer position.
Add a couple more positions, I'm good for that.
All right, so before we take additional comments, I know that our city manager has something to it.
I just want to say thank you for the report. I know this has taken a lot of work in several months to complete, so I really appreciate the presentation as well, so thank you for that. I want to say to the council that traffic enforcement is being a priority to our community since I have memory. I remember my first day with the city, I was sitting in these council chambers and having the exact same discussion. So it really is something that kind of like even flows, and it's just really important to address. And I guess what I want to say is that when the study began, we had one officer dedicated to traffic. Today, as we sit in this chamber, we have one sergeant, two officers, and two more coming to our traffic unit. So the department has taken proactive strides to actually fill a unit, that's very important. And that, that work has already happened. They're not reporting to it, because they didn't get to see it when they were doing their part. But some of the recommendations that, that are being discussed tonight, like the civilian manager position, which you highlighted, is also already implemented. So there's a lot of work that, as the report came as a draft, there were some kind of like low-hanging fruits and things that we could implement that we're already working on.
I'll step in before I call their council members, because I think this goes hand-in-hand with the question I had, is how does the implementation, what's the implementation plan? What are things that we are doing or can start doing immediately? And what are things that will take a little longer for us to implement? So that's one question. The other question is, is there a price tag? And if so, what is it?
Right now, right now, we're not asking for an additional funding. We've made great strides in hiring. We only have two vacancies right now. We have 13 officers in various stages of training, and as they complete their training, they will start filling some of these positions, like we talked about the traffic unit and some of these other positions. So we think that will have a huge impact, especially on proactivity, in being able to focus on some of these items and not just responding for calls for service.
May I add to that?
Yeah, please. Thank you, Mayor. I also want to add and sort of put this, this report in context. What is it? I just want to put this in context. This, this report, when, when we went out to the voters and approved Measure Y, which is the successor of Measure G, one of the new provisions of Measure Y calls for this type of assessment to be done in both of our safety, public safety departments. So as you may recall, a few years back, we actually were able to complete, much closer to 2020, the, an assessment for the fire department, and that was presented and kind of like really looking into the future as to how we're serving our community through the lens of the fire department calls and the potential for growth. This is the police version of that. So it's just really kind of like complying with Measure Y provision, that we are looking at service assessment of our public safety departments to make sure that, that we plan for the future. So this is a great roadmap, right? Like, that really gives us that level of awareness as to like, as we continue to grow, how do we need to staff our department so that we can actually deliver the level of service that is required? So I just want to make sure that that context is discussed.
Thank you. Councilmember Ari Parker?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions and concerns. Is this the appropriate time for the questions and concerns, or should I hold off on it?
This is the time for questions.
This is the report, okay, yeah, great. Okay, so, little bit concerned, everything that Councilwoman Dutra talked about. I have gotten calls, complaints, and I have been educated, Amish educated me. Amish educated me way back at a police thing where I was just going on about people walking illegally across a major thoroughfare. And I was told, and you can re-educate me if I'm wrong, and so the public doesn't know this, because I sure as heck didn't, that if, unless they cause an accident, then really we don't write them up and give them, you know, a warning or other such things. It kind of occurred to me the other night, Freedom Boulevard, there's this guy walking straight across, Main Street, excuse me, walking straight across Main Street, and here goes a police car right next to him, as he's walking across a non-crosswalk area. And it drives people crazy. And so maybe, it may not just be a question for you, it may be a question for our police to educate the general public on it. I appreciate more traffic, because I've lived here long enough to know when we had actual dedicated traffic cops on motorcycles and everything else, and then not. So I appreciate what this is here. I also appreciate the non-sworn parking control supervisor position. I think that's a great idea, used well. And I have a couple other questions, but I'd just like to go back to that one, because that was something, it's not just accidents, it's people illegally crossing with their children and dogs and all sorts of things, and it's everybody, putting everybody on edge when they're, when they're driving.
That may be an answer better suited for your, your police department, not, not.
Not that they want to, but yeah.
Traffic enforcement is a priority. That's one of the, as these officers come out of training, that's one of our highest priorities. We're currently doing testing for motor officers. So as we get additional officers out there, they'll be able to address some of these issues. And again, as we get more officers on the street, our patrol officers will have more time to do traffic enforcement. I can't comment on that specific incident that you mentioned.
Well, there's probably about five to 10 that I personally have seen where a police officer has been in the vicinity and that crosswalk has been 20 feet away, and yet they do whatever they're going to do.
As we see staffing increase, we definitely will see proactivity increase. That is our expectation.
Well, here's the kicker on it. Some of these, I'd say the majority of these folks are homeless that are doing that, although there's grandparents with kids and they just don't want to walk all the way down. Is that change the enforcement thought?
I didn't quite understand what.
If it's a homeless person that's crossing the street?
It's, no, they're treated like anyone else. If it's someone suffering a mental health episode, obviously, we're going to try to make sure they're safe. And we're currently, our, you know, our care position officer is vacant, and as we continue to hire, that's another position we want to fill.
So that, that person could be stopped and talked to, and then another person could be contacted to come and talk to them if they need services or anything else at that point? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, you want to say something?
Please. Good evening, Mayor and council and city staff. My name's David Rodriguez from the PD. That's actually a really good question, and we get it often. Sometimes we'll even get citizen complaints about it, because to the general public, it looks like there's something that happened.
Yeah, your microphone's not as.
There's something that happened right in front of the officer, and the officer, he or she, just drove right past him without even a concern or stop or anything like that. So with those specifics, it gives us an opportunity to look into what actually happened there. Oftentimes, we find officers dispatched to a higher priority call, so the officer doesn't have the, the opportunity to say, I'm going to pen this 911 call of a potential, whatever crime you want to put there, to address this lower-level issue in front of me. You know, at the time, when you're comparing a 911 call and a, and a pedestrian issue, it might be that the pedestrian issue is a lower-level issue. So we actually invite those people that are frustrated by that, whether it's one of you or whether it's a community member, to actually call us and ask us, hey, what happened here? Unit number 17, you know, was right in front of a speeding, but a speeding car didn't do anything about it. What, what were they doing in that moment? That was so much more important than addressing the issue right in front of them.
And I'm assuming that the rest of the council does what I do. I encourage them. I give them the number, and I say, please call. I mean, I, I can make that report, you know, to our city manager or whatever, but please call, because police want to hear from you. So I, I have expectations of that. But when I know that the urgency of the patrol car doesn't have lights, they're going slow, they're checking out other things, you know, they could have another call, but maybe not. And it just would be reflective upon maybe, hey, tell them, if they can do it, do it. And, and it has to do with what our consultants were talking about. Maybe some people are just, that's not their thing. And it's everybody's thing, because it drives, it scares a lot of people when you have someone walking out into a busy roadway, because we know that if that's an adult with a child and you get hit, I mean, not only is that an injury to a human and to a little human, but it's going to be on you as a, as a citizen and, you know, as a driver in the city of Watsonville. And so people get really upset by that. And we have enough road rage stuff going on, you know, for various other reasons, and a lot of speeding in, in neighborhoods.
We couldn't, we couldn't agree more on the fact that it's everybody's issue to address. While they mentioned we can't have quotas, right? That's, that's not something we could do. But our officers are, you know, evaluated on performance, and part of their performance evaluation is that of their proactive approach, their, whether it be traffic stops, pedestrian stops, bike stops, other type of traffic-related issues, that is part of the, the evaluation process. So we do, we do impress upon them that that is their overall goal, and it, I mean, it's pretty evident. The slide that they showed, showing that we don't have much proactive time, or at least at the time they evaluated it, we didn't have that much proactive time. But what was the number one thing we did with the available proactive time? Those traffic stops. So it's evident by that slide. And one other thing I want to mention, too, is one thing that we've been really aggressive about and proactive about in addressing the traffic issues, even through the short staffing, is going after the OTS grants and CHP grants every year. Typically, departments aren't receiving that back-to-back years, and if I'm not mistaken, we're going on maybe three or four straight years, four straight years of that. So what that does is, while we might not have a dedicated motor officer in that assignment at that moment, we have all these overtime shifts that are being covered by state money so that we put officers in position to, to deal with certain things like click it or ticket, speeding situations, pedestrian violations, and then even more importantly, partnering with ecology action to do all the educational-type traffic-related information. So we're, we're definitely looking for ways to be aggressive with the issue and, and be proactive, even with, at times when we found ourselves, you know, short-staffed.
Well, that's much appreciated, and you answered what OTS is, overtime shift. So that's the grant, I was going to ask what that was.
That's one way to, one way to look at it.
Okay, and, and that's, that's good. Community, and I don't know if our consultants addressed this, I mean, I looked at it, but maybe I missed it. Community education, because honestly, it could be done by a sworn officer, a non-sworn officer or personnel, but honestly, it has a huge impact when it's a sworn officer. And it has a bigger impact when you're in the schools with kids, talking to them. Because if you look at, in my area of town, when people go fast, they're not teenagers, they're 20- to 30-year-olds, you know, that are just zooming in 25 mile an hour zones, and they're going 40 to 50. So speed bumps have helped that a little bit, you know? But is education a part of this plan? And not necessarily to you. I was just talking about there, but you can answer what you'd like to do.
Absolutely, and it goes to that proactive time. That, that graph that Richard showed you that has negative proactive time, well, that means they're going, they're on calls, right?
We can go back to that, that.
Whether it's, whether it's driving past the person in the street or not giving education, but the more officers you have that have that proactive time, that is what we, as consultants, see is, that's the time that you're doing your education, your proactive time, whether it's proactive on the street or having the opportunity to go to schools and educating the students, being out in the streets, stopping and saying hello to people, educating them, that's, that's a huge part of that proactive time that, and sometimes they don't have.
And if you're able to get something more like the mid-40 percentile, it allows you to take an officer off the street for, say, an hour, to meet with a community group, that they're not responding to calls at all. I would also say, you mentioned sworn or non-sworn, a public safety specialist can have a role in that as well, and do.
And I can't, I can't add that the part of your community, one of your divisions has community programs and community engagement personnel who do an absolutely outstanding job, in our opinion, in educating and, and those community events. So, so you have that component already in your department, and that's something that, that you key on, and that's, they're already out there doing exactly what you just said.
Okay. Did you want to add something?
Again, we agree, full-heartedly. The community engagement part with, with the traffic-related issues is almost as, as important as the enforcement. One of, one of our most effective efforts is providing youth with helmets and teaching them the right fitting. So when they ride a bike, not only do they have a helmet, but they know how to use it, because we take it for granted that everyone has a helmet and they know how to use it. That's not the case. So that's just one example of the efforts that we still take part in. And when the city manager talked about, you know, some of the overtime that we accrue, some of these, some of the, these overtime kind of slots are these community engagement efforts, when we realize we don't have a dedicated person on duty to do it, but it's that vital of a, of an event, or that vital of a presentation or engagement effort that we'll call someone in so they can do it.
Thank you. And then the last question I have is about kind of the organizational chart that's going to come out of this. And where you talk about reducing your captains, increasing lieutenants, has that, I mean, what status does this have? Have you guys accepted that?
That's something we'd look at in the future.
Okay.
Over the next decade. That's not something that we're looking at at the moment.
That you're looking to implement at this time?
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not asking to implement that at this time.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there's none, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing that there's none, I'll bring it back to council for a motion.
Are we just moving, I move to accept the report?
Yeah.
Okay, can we get a second?
Okay, I'll second.
All right, can we get roll call, please?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Aye.
Q. Carter? Salsito?
Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 13.0, emergency items to the agenda. There's none tonight. Item 14.0, requests and scheduling future agenda items. Do we have any requests?
It's more like a report. Everybody in my part of town, which I'm sure more other parts of town, really interested in how we're using our, the police are using our drones. They don't, I guess they could do a report on that after the Fourth of July versus if they, because they, they were going to do a different strategy this year, use a different strategy? Okay.
Okay, any others? All right, seeing that there's none, we won't be adjourning. We're going to go back to closed session to discuss another item under 3B. And after we're done with that, we'll come back and adjourn the meeting. There's still a conversation to be had under that item. With that, we adjourn today's meeting at 8:40 PM. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:41.